I want to say it's two minutes yet, but this is... Our clock is getting faster as we go. There you go.
Two minutes early for whatever reason.
I was gonna say.
I have no idea.
Could you go up to the top of the bell tower and wind the clock back?
That will not be me.
Too unfortunate.
Better talk to Jeff.
Doesn't that say right at the first thing is to keep the clock right on the administrative desk?
I think we have to remember, Michael was never able to achieve that either, so yeah, it's weird. The view is beautiful up there, I understand, so it's a long way down. It is a long way down. Okay, here we go.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners meeting for March 18th, 2025, for our Committee of the Whole. If you would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Reports from state and county officials, are there any state or county officials that would like to update the board this morning?
Steve.
Hearing none, we would like to hear from Steve. Steve Curry, our MAC Executive Director, thanks for coming this morning.
All right. Can you hear me all right?
Is that better? There we go. There you go. All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me today. My name is Steve Curry, I'm the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Counties. I believe there's a presentation or a slideshow in your packet there that I'm gonna run through. Feel free to interrupt me as I go through for questions, or if you prefer to wait till the end, that's fine too. So if we go to the first slide there, pass the presentation slide there, thank you. So that talks a little bit about the purpose of MAC. So we're known for three areas: advocacy, education, and services. Advocacy, we look at that as a team effort, so while we try to be the voice of counties in Lansing, we definitely look at it as a team effort. We're hopefully, we're arming you with information to go to your elected officials and advocate for county government back in their districts. We also coordinate with the NACO at the national level to work with them, with our congressional members, on county issues that may affect, you know, at a national level. And then, education, we provide numerous educational opportunities, whether it's our two conferences a year, webinars throughout the year, our new county commissioner school, which was last fall. Now that there are four-year county commissioner terms, we're gonna be working on kinda like a midterm educational session for those. And also, you know, our county education program, which you get certain number of credits and gives you certification as a county commissioner. Nothing required, nothing in stone, but it does help you kinda go and learn about county government and things that affect you as you embark on this journey of being a county commissioner. And then finally, services, we have a variety of services through our association, many counties take advantage of, and I'll talk about that more in a little bit. If you go to the next slide, please.
Sorry, trying to get something fixed here, sorry.
All right, no problem. The next slide talks a little bit about the MAC Board of Directors. There are 16 county commissioners elected from across the state. They meet at least four times a year at each of our conferences, and then two other times. We do have elections each annual conference, so this annual conference, which will be this fall, will be electing some new seats. Your region actually does have an open seat for the annual conference, so if you're interested in running, you'll hear about how to fill out an application as we get closer to that conference. Next slide, please. That's our MAC leadership, so Melissa Dobbs, the current MAC President, she's from Wayne County. Antoinette Wallace is the first Vice President from Macomb County. Brian Colke, second Vice President from Newago County. And Stan Ponstant is our immediate past President from Kent County. Next slide, please. That's our MAC events, I talked a little bit about that. In about three weeks, we'll be having our Legislative Conference in Lansing, April 7th through 9th, in Lansing, Michigan. That conference is always in Lansing, so you should have seen the registration being opened up for that. And then our annual conference will be in Traverse City this fall in September. Next slide, please. So as we look at some of our legislative accomplishments over the past legislative session, first and foremost, you'll always hear us talk about county revenue sharing. Last year's budget process, we were able to get a $30 million increase for county revenue sharing across the state. As many of you know, county revenue sharing is statutorily appropriated each year, it's not constitutionally guaranteed like cities, villages, and townships. So what that means is each year, the legislature can appropriate those funds away to other priorities if they want to. So that's something we obviously work very hard, we've been very lucky and successful over the past probably eight to 10 years on getting increases to revenue sharing, but we have seen times when they've been appropriated away at, you know, 20% right off the top of statutory revenue sharing. So we continue to work with that. We're working with the legislature now to maintain an increase in revenue sharing, which right now is about a 3.6% increase, and we're working at some other ways to solidify revenue sharing, and I'll talk about that in a second. In the courts and public safety area, we were able to get trial court funding, extended those fees, extended till 2026. Had those fees gone away, it would've cost counties about $30 million statewide to fund the court system, had those fees gone away. There is an effort to kinda reevaluate how courts are being funded, operated, where those fees come from, how they're distributed, we're part of those work groups. Those came about back in 2019 from the Trial Court Funding Commission. COVID hits, those recommendations kinda fall to the wayside, now they're working again to kinda get those recommendations reinstated, so we'll be working with the legislature on that. Health and Human Services, we are working with MDHHS, our friends at CMH, the Sheriff's Association, on a 115 waiver. What that does is make sure that those folks that are being charged and incarcerated in our county jails maintain their healthcare coverage. Right now, they lose that healthcare coverage, what that means is if they were to have some, any sort of healthcare emergency while they were in the jail prior to conviction, you would have to pay for it. We believe that if it is prior to conviction and they are just charged, that they should maintain those benefits, and so we're working with the federal government on that to get a waiver on that. A lot of states have been successful in getting that waiver. Small Business PPT Exemption Reimbursement, back in 2019, there was a exemption given to the small businesses for PPT. We were guaranteed, we were told at that time that there would be a backfill for that, at the time that cost about $75 million. We were finally able to get that backfill reinstated, so that money came through last legislative session at the tune of about $75 million for local governments across the state. And then, some changes to how lake levels are handled. You can see that PA there was 112, or sorry, Senate Bill 662, which has to do with how lake levels are handled at the county level. Next slide, please. Some of the things we were able to fend off during the inner string lean dock, there was an effort to change minimum staffing levels and make that a part of mandatory collective bargaining. There was an attempt to change the statewide SEPTIC code, and there was an effort to change how publicly funded health insurance was handled at the county level. Something that we were, we are in favor of looking at, but the attempt that they were looking at passing, we did not support, but we will be working on that issue as this letter of safe session moves through. Next slide, please. The next slide kinda talks a little about some of our priorities we'll be working on. This legislative session, of course, I talked about revenue sharing. One thing we're trying to do with county revenue sharing is create a revenue sharing trust fund, that would be a virtual lockbox for county revenue sharing, make it more difficult for the legislature to appropriate those funds away, which I talked about. We were able to get that legislation passed very successfully last session out of the House, 106 to 4 it passed out, bipartisan support, couldn't get movement in the Senate. We are working on getting that reintroduced right now and are hopeful to get that moved through, because it is a nonpartisan issue, and when you're looking at the makeup of the legislature, we're gonna be, we really wanna see a bipartisan support on that. Reforming ERM Sick Time Act, that's obviously been enacted, something that we worked with business groups on to help with. Compensating local governments for funds diverted by the veterans, property tax exemption, something that we've been talking about for a while, back in 2015, there was a veterans' property tax exemption enacted, which we were supportive of at the time, however, we wanted the state to reimburse us for those exemptions. We felt that the state was gonna be voting on a local property tax exemption, they should reimburse the locals for that. We've been working with VSOs, other veteran groups, on an equitable way to get that backfill. We have not been successful in getting it done, but it is something we're gonna be embarking on again. Have no impact on the veterans, they would still get the exemption, however, the state would backfill local governments for that exemption. Adopting a permanent state solution for funding Michigan courts, I talked a little bit about those fees already, and mentioned the sunset date of 2026. That'll be here before we know it, especially 2026 being an election year, where pretty much everyone's on the ballot. We do wanna work on getting something enacted prior to that date, 'cause we do feel like 2026 is gonna be a tough year to get a lot of things done. So, as I mentioned, those work groups are going right now on how courts are funded, so stay tuned on how, what sort of legislation gets introduced on that. And then increasing road funding to address the crisis, the road funding crisis. We have seen the House package introduced, in fact, they're taking testimony on that today. We are testifying in support of that, that's significant dollars to locals when you look at how those funds are distributed. So a lot more money to the bottom part of that formula. It does take away sales tax at the pump and moves that towards, to a gas tax, and there's some other changes in the corporate tax structure, which we're agnostic on. We do have a little bit of concerns on the sales tax going away at the gasoline pump, but not enough where we're opposed to that legislation. There's enough funding coming to locals, local roads in that package where we are supportive. We're still waiting to see what the governor's plan looks like, there has been at least verbally some similarities between the governor's plan and the House plan, so we'll see where that kinda plays out as well. I talked a little, next slide, please, sorry. I talked a little bit about the political shift in Lansing now, of course, we have a Republican House, Democrat-controlled, a very slim Democrat-controlled Senate. We have seen the House leadership eliminate the Local Government Committee, which a lot of our bills went to local government. What does that mean? That just means that a lot of our bills are probably going to finance MAC Committee, more education for us, for those members who may not have local government backgrounds, we have to educate them on what locals do and how the decisions they make will impact us. And then, the House has instituted a rule which restricts budget earmarks, doesn't affect counties too much, I mean, some counties did get some individual carve-outs and things like that, but those now have special rules that you have to follow in order to get those sort of things. Next slide, please. So this is, talks a little bit about the road funding plan, 1 million plus for counties, so obviously significant dollars. Right now, I talked a little bit about how the sales tax goes away. We do have a concern about the general fund for revenue sharing purposes, but these are significant dollars that come to counties, and there's no change in the distribution model with this plan, which was good to see, 'cause if you're trying to increase funding and then you change the distribution model, you're kinda open two can of worms, that becomes difficult to follow. So, we're happy with the distribution model the way it is now, and we'll see where the governor's recommendation comes for that. Next slide, please. I talked a little bit about this, I'm not gonna spend too much on this slide, because it has been almost a month now since this change has been enacted, but it did impact counties in a variety of ways across the state, and so we were happy to help get this passed. Next slide, please. So how do we develop these policies? We have six internal committees, or sorry, five internal committees where these policies are made. Some of you sit on those committees, we appreciate that. You don't have to come to Lansing, if you'd like to participate on those committees, you can participate remotely. They meet six to seven times a year, about once a month, starting in September, they end about May, and if you would like to participate, you can fill out an application at our website, MICounties.org. Next slide, please. This talks a little bit about our PAC, our Political Action Committee, we use it to primarily support those in leadership positions in our, in the committees in the legislature, and those former county commissioners that are in the legislature. We have about 26 former county commissioners right now in the legislature, so if you'd like to donate, you can donate at the website there. Next slide, please. These are some of the service programs I talked about, we have a cooperative purchasing program, a workers' compensation fund, a variety of healthcare programs that many counties take advantage of. If you're interested in learning more, please feel free to work, reach out to us. And next slide, please. And finally, this is our, all our communication tools, so we have Facebook, Twitter, all that. We do a podcast once a week, hopefully you're getting our weekly legislative updates. Every other month, we do a printed newsletter that has a distribution of about 1,600 people, so pretty widely distributed, so hopefully you're getting those, we're arming you with information to do your jobs better. If you're not getting any of that, please feel free to reach out to us, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, good presentation. Questions from commissioners? Sometimes you're just that thorough.
Yeah, I mean, nail on the head, everything is good that way.
No, we appreciate you coming and spending some time with us and giving us an update on a yearly basis. Look forward to seeing you at the Legislative Conference in April, for sure, and that, as many times as it's been to it, there's always new and insightful information, they bring together some good minds, share information on a lot of these things that you've hit on just a little more in depth, so we'll look forward to exploring some of that in more detail there, and if you have not got signed up for that yet, I know Marcia and I have signed up for it, but you're all invited, so.
Thank you, appreciate the time today.
Thank you, Steve.
Any additional reports from state or county officials? Hearing none, limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for items listed on the agenda.
So many things to talk about about this. Number two, request for increase, Deputy Administrator position, part-time and full-time. On 11-5, 11-12, he actually reclassified Deputy Administrator position, and it goes with a recent hiring as County Administrator. Is the addition of a new human resources position to County Administration Office the one? But that was an immediate increase in salaries.
Well, in this executive assistant request, it's going to eliminate that position that was never filled, although the wages paid were attached.
Because it was an immediate.
So that's really a big question. You're supposed to watch out.
The taxpayer's salary. Spending. So, also look at the classifications.
And how the.
The classification committee has waited for consideration in courts.
Same thing, Deputy Administrator in courts. It's really been showing it the last year and a year, but it's a business, I'm not sure why.
Want to have an executive assistant?
That doesn't support the employees of Berry County, but it supports the.
The executive, you know, the administration and Administration Office, but once again, there's more money. Then if you go down to, or go up to, I should say, Natural Resources, you have Bailey Park Grant here, and they're asking for $177,000. Out of the Parks Fund. Well, Bailey property became a liability and a debt to the county taxpayers and the county. They have an estate.
I'm not sure if I'm gonna say this right now.
But you're not mandated to fund these grant requests.
With taxpayer dollars. Your directors in parks should be looking at other opportunities, especially with that property.
See, now you took this property out with stipulation, go back to that estate, so this is what we like to do with the property. More money than you folks. You have a $40 million plus jail to build.
And this general fund money can be put back into things like that. If you go down to the next one, River Park one, once again, they want $151,500 out of the Parks Fund.
The Parks Fund is from the general fund, if I'm not mistaken.
Which I understand, which you can restructure and put into, I don't know, money from the jails, see, and how you.
Only started a jail fund with purple money and actually never had no money coming from, what I understand. In there. Thank you. To finish up, what, $378,500 out of the general fund needs to be reallocated to the jail, not Parks. The jail is. A mandate, Parks, urban, unmandated.
Additional public comment?
Hi, I'm Steve Schultz, I'm, I live here in Hastings, and.
The company I work for is Green Gale Communications.
Right now, we have a project that we're gonna be doing.
In the Thornhample Township area, that is funded by USDA utility service funds.
Offering broadband services, fiber to the home broadband services to a number of.
Unserved locations in Thornhample Township.
We're in the process of doing a lead application through the State of Michigan, the.
State of Michigan.
High High, the Michigan.
Michigan high-speed internet office, and.
And so I'm here to ask for a letter of support from the county. I had reached out to Bader.
Zizka?
Is that how you say it?
Zizka.
Okay. I said it myself, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to say it. So, our company is primarily based out of Van Buren and Alleghen Counties, we serve just a little bit of Kalamazoo County. Been in business since 1905, so we're not a new company, although this area is new to us. Our application in Thornhample Township would be about, the current project that we have that we're waiting for approval from the USDA, it's in, just in the process of finalizing the paperwork, is about 500 locations.
This additional area that we're looking at would be another 300 or so locations, so 800 or so unserved or underserved locations in Thornhample Township, so it's around but not in Middleville. Not in the village at all, but it's around it, and again, unserved and underserved locations.
I've been really glad to work with Jennifer and Nicole from the Economic Development Chamber, and they've helped me quite a bit on.
Working on areas.
Working on our application, getting letters of support, so we're here just to ask the county for a letter of support, just kinda give you guys a little bit of a heads up that we're, we've got a project that we're.
That we have in the process right now.
And then, again, we've got this other application for additional locations, that we hope will be successful. The, the application process and all the hoops and doing all the things and.
Getting applications in is a very difficult and challenging process.
One last thing is, is I've been really glad to have.
Commissioner Daddie helped so much.
With her helping and.
Helping me to do the application, talk about locations. Meeting with townspeople and everything else, so.
If anybody has any questions, I'll make sure that.
The industry has my information.
Point anybody in my direction if you have questions.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
Additional public comment? Hearing none, we'll move ahead with our agenda. The chair would entertain a motion for approval of the February 18th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
So moved, Hatfield.
Mark Bassett.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Bassett, for approval of the February 18th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next up, Danielle Zollner. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you all today?
Awesome.
I just wanted to pop on today to give an update on our spongy moth surveys and the work that we've done for the county, and we came in and presented, what, about a month ago, I think it was, it was a video there a month ago, on survey work that we've completed, and I wanted to let you know, we did have an article published, a little paper actually, I read yesterday. And one of the things that we did at the end of that article, through that NACO webpage, that we created this resource for county, and anybody can get to it if they go to our website and click on the link we have, that's spongy moth. We talked about what spongy moth is, how it got here, and.
If you could scroll a little bit on your website.
We talked about their life cycle in particular, how does the stage where spongy moth is polluting our trees is only about seven to eight weeks long each summer, and we also talked about the cyclical nature of the spongy moth population in the area. We also talked about how it's not only just a viral disease that hasn't impacted on this species, but also a fungal disease, and then the two of them together kind of were supercharged, had superpowers, started hitting the population with a rash. And Dr. Greg Wyer is the one, the gentleman who gave him the original, who means our species. Who has property here in Berry County, and virus that he has been tracking in the population. We found that in the third one sites that we sample, or cross by sites that he sampled, 99%. We talked about that work a little bit there. We also provide quite a few resources that come from both across the state, from DNR as well as MSU Extension, and we also linked to one of Dr. Wyer's papers where he talks about how, not just with spongy moth, but with a lot of the organisms that we consider pet, it's often multiple factors that lead to the close-in nature of their population explosion and decline. And then here, we talk specifically about what's going on in Berry County. Now you'll notice that this map, it looks a little bit different than the one that was. Then put up for you all.
One of the things that we did not want to do with the public website was have point information, because 25 of the 31 sites that we did our surveys at were on private property.
Allowed us to come to their properties, they were all 40 acres, not more, or larger. So we, we not wanna necessarily.
But, so the blue area is the area that we surveyed, and.
Largely came back as populations that were under that threshold for us to be expecting potential depoliation for next year. Whereas the red sites, or I would call them sites to keep an eye on. Our follow-up work this winter actually shown that.
At least 10 of those six red sites were, actually it looks like there was further decline in the egg masses that were viable, so we're gonna continue to visit those sites and keep an eye on them, but I would say spongy moth populations can be patchy, but largely we are still expecting that. Noticeable decline compared to that.
Dr. Wyer's lab.
Looked for her fat lady for the virus, and found that it was widespread in the population. And. How to get rid of.
Also, guide people through how they can get rid of spongy moth particles on their own properties, and then talk specifically about spraying, and.
That you should use a particular type of spray.
BTK, which is actually a soil bacterium, which is kind of wild to talk about, but go ahead and scroll past that.
And then the other thing we did was highlight a few communities relatively close to us and the actions that they took, along with the webpages that they put together, or moved people to them, and then.
And then we put together a couple, a list of projects that. Either individual landowners, townships.
Anybody that would like to potentially consider spraying, if they find that they would not like to wait and see, I guess. The other thing that we included in the webpage was a link to a survey method, which would be a.
X-8 survey method.
That we use, somehow, to extend. There's a written protocol as well as a very easy to follow, do the protocol for that. And then we're, we're of course happy to make the question come out in the question.
We will also be at the Business Expo on April 19th, and plan to share. We will also be at the Business Expo on April 19th and plan to share spongy moth information. An outreach event. As well as information on sports and sports events. And we're. Continuing to collaborate with Dr. Wyre. Population injury. As well as maintaining our relationship. And helping consult with them on their particular health. And that's all I have for my. Page on spongy moth. But I also wanted to just remind everybody that our tree sale is going on and will be open until April 6th. It will be the last day for the tree sale. And then pick up. Will be at Charlestown Park.
Questions from commissioners? It's very thorough, having Dr. Wyre here was fun.
Yes.
To think that, from Chicago and really investing a lot of time in Berry County with our local on-the-ground eyes and ears, so that was great information. So, and this will be helpful to have this website to direct people to, because there's always a lot of concern. So when we start seeing these patches, hopefully the information is correct and the populations continue to decline. Otherwise, we're going to give them your phone number, so you know.
No problem.
But we do, we did get quite a few calls on it, a lot of concern last year, but hopefully if the populations continue to crash and we're in the downward cycle, it'll be good for all of us in the county, so.
Biology is saying that we're on the worst side right now. So, I mean, just for, biology also dictates that our populations are patchy and there's still might be. Or a small area potentially is more defoliation.
I think even Dr. Wyre said that he would not really support spraying in the county at this point with the population projected to crash, so.
Yeah, and it's one of those things too, where if the population never gets to the high enough levels that they can really spread this virus amongst one another, then we could have a whole discussion about population dynamics and insects and pests, but, but I think, I think that nature can definitely.
Okay. Additional questions or comments from commissioners?
Thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Next on our agenda, Dan Patton. He snuck in there somewhere.
Mr. Chairman. Morning commissioners.
Dan, is that microphone on?
Hello.
Hello. There it's on.
It is now.
Okay.
Danielle was trying to be really quiet this morning. Yeah, so before you, I have a couple of requests for some grant applications. And certainly ask any questions as we go along. The first one is for an application to the Natural Resources, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. Basically, I think there is a resolution for you. We're anticipating a project, estimated cost at around 577,000. We do anticipate applying for the grant for maximum amount within the trust fund of 400,000 to offset the costs, leaving us with 177,000 matching funds. We do have currently available within Parks budget around 145,000 of that, and then the remaining balance or potentially the additional amount coming from the Bailey Endowment that was set up for Bailey Nature Preserve. So ultimately, it's not a request for any new funds from the general fund or from any other source, it's just letting the DNR know that we have the funds available to move forward the project that are currently setting in our fund balance and we can proceed with the application. I will say, the other thing too is even, even with this approval today, or moving it to the board next week, ultimately it would come back to you a second time if we're awarded the grant. The county board also has to approve the acceptance of the awarded amount, so. Questions?
I have a question. So you talk about a portion of it coming from Bailey and a portion of it coming from your budget. How are you going to determine what comes from what?
So there's, well, there's a couple of things there. So one of the things we're always doing is, is looking for additional dollars. And one of the stipulations that we had when we set the endowment up originally is that we could use part of those funds as matching dollars. The other thing that we discussed with them was trying to use that for matching dollars with the other grant programs, even outside of this. And, and I would say, right now we are, let's see, one, two, we have three different grants that we're working on, two different grants that have been completed, and two more that we're starting within the next couple of weeks. So it's not that, it's not that we'll actually need any of the 177,000. I don't know. I can't, I can't really answer that question right now, because I don't know what the other dollar amounts may or may not be that come in between now and the time this gets done. And remember, we're probably 2027 at the earliest. This is obviously 2025, it seems like a long ways out, and it is. But for this grant in particular, even if we're, even if we're notified of award, it still takes an act of the legislature. My guess is if we were to receive the grant, we would not even get a, an opportunity to move forward until probably late 2027, at the earliest. So it's kind of a good thing, bad thing. I hate the timeline because you're stuck trying to calculate numbers for projects two years out, but in reality, it does give us more time to try to find other funds. So ultimately, we may need no county dollars. I, I don't know, but I can't say that today definitively. What I can say is we have the resources to cover the 177 today, and if I can find other resources to cover it in the future, we'll do that too, so.
Additional questions from commissioners?
What, what is the maximum that could cost us?
I don't think you're talking about general fund dollars here. You're talking about park dollars.
That is correct.
Okay.
Already available.
Already available. Yes, sir.
This is in the Sheldon Park.
This is not. No, this is a part of our Parks and Recreation Budget, and the money's, yeah, I'm not asking for new money. So.
Questions or comments?
My, my only comment is that I want to call out Dan Patton in, in how aggressive he's seeking out these grant funding opportunities so that we can leverage grant money against grant money against. And it's, it's time consuming. It's, it is, if anybody here has written a grant application, some, some are on the easier end of the spectrum, but, but some are more detailed. And I've written a trust fund grant application, and it's, it's a lot of work. So the effort that he's put into this so that we can leverage a small portion of county money so that we can get these projects done is really to be commended. So he's doing a great job.
Thank you. I think as Dan mentioned, that this is for approval to submit the application.
That is correct.
This is not a final action, and there is no commitment of dollars at this time. This is only an application.
That is correct. I'll be, if, if we're awarded, I'm going to tell you, it's, it's super challenging. I, I don't know if we get it or not, then we would have to come back and you would have to approve the acceptance of the grant.
Okay.
So there is no, no commitment at this time, other than I need a commitment to apply.
Okay.
So.
And at, at a time when if it is accepted and awarded, then you bring the details back with the funding.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I appreciate that update and that information.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yes.
What will the projects be down at Metcalf Lake?
So at the Bailey Nature Preserve, it's a handicap accessible trail, vault toilet, and small picnic pavilion. We've already completed the work on the parking, parking lot there off of Baseline Road. Mr. Hamilton completed that for us back in the fall. So we've already started the work process. We've got a couple of projects we hope to get lined up over the summer, doing some invasive species work, and then ultimately, we're trying to put together a volunteer crew to start doing some of the clearing for what would be a new trail as a part of the grant program. I'll say this too, Bob, I know this is near and dear to you. I, I, I mean, we estimate it at 577,000. I think ultimately, we get the project done for less than that. But again, one of the challenges I'm dealing with is trying to plan, again, at least two years out, not having any idea what the cost of anything's going to be in two years. So the number ends up being really high, right? Because you're building in, right now, we're building in 20% on everything, just, just because I have no idea what that's going to look like. Ultimately, I think we're able to get it done for less than that, but I don't want to bring it up here and, and not, not be sure I have all my bases covered either. So, but yeah, right now it's a vault toilet trail, pavilion, and the trail will be ADA compliant, and we actually had the Kalamazoo Access Network. They've already written a letter of support for the trail piece, because it is going to be available for those who have access mobility or need assisted mobility.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. There are no further questions. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-10, a resolution to authorize application for a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant for improvements at the Bailey Nature Preserve.
So moved.
Support, Kent Bell.
Motion by Getty, support by Cantwell, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-10, a resolution to authorize application for a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant for improvements at the Bailey Nature Preserve. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Next one, I'll just keep going?
Yes.
The next one is a resolution application for a Michigan Recreation Passport Grant. Again, we're not asking for any new dollars from the general fund or anything else. One of the reasons, actually, one of the reasons we're able to do this is because some, because of some additional grant funding that we received last year for our accessibility projects. Again, we're continuously applying for grants, so we didn't know we were going to get that funding. We were successful in getting that funding, so it actually freed up dollars to go for this grant. So this one is actually coming back to you really a second time. This is the canoe kayak piece that I brought to you. Remember now, three or four years ago, we applied for a grant, we're unsuccessful, so we're back again. And this would be improvements down at our boat ramp area there at Charlestown Park, creating wheelchair accessible canoe kayak launch, and then making some improvements within the parking. One of those is actually creating a, excuse me, a concrete parking space so that someone in a wheelchair can access the water. And then improving just the other parking that we have up in that area. That project totals 301,000, $500. The grant request on that's 150,000. And again, we have the funding in place to cover the, the matching portion of that. So, questions?
Again, this is an application.
Correct.
This is not a final action, this is only an application to see if we get the award. At that point, we'd go over the matching funds and where that comes from, so. Questions from commissioners? Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-11, a resolution to authorize application for a Michigan Recreation Passport Grant for Improvements at Historical Charlestown Park. Would like to make that motion? Motion by Tunis and support by Hadfield to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-11, a resolution to authorize application for a Michigan Recreation Passport for Grant Improvement at Historic Charlestown Park. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Again, I have a very open door. If anybody has any questions, they can come see me. You know where I'm at.
Thank you. Keep knocking, some of these grants will go through.
Oh, yeah.
Next up, Eric. Resolution to establish our PACE program.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. And your packet is the next step for the establishment of the PACE program, which we've talked about in previous meetings. I don't, in talking to the Chair, I don't think you need to take action on this today. This is a cow. We're going to put it under, we have a public hearing scheduled for next week already, and it'll be under items to be considered for the final approval. So this is your opportunity, if you have any other questions, there is the audience, Nicole White and Jennifer Heisman from the chamber. You also have a letter from Copper Rock in there, who was the original, who, the reason why this is in front of you right now, to move this forward for their project here in Hastings. So happy to answer any questions. We also have the executive. If not, well, then I would just move forward for next week's public hearing. Final decision. What decision?
I know there were several questions from commissioners last time. There were a few no votes on this, and, and some of it was just, I think it was brand new, and we didn't have an opportunity to really delve into the details of it. I know Commissioner Smelker had mentioned he's had done some due diligence on this. You were initially a no vote on this. Would you like to share some of your insight?
I've, I've run around to some businesses and private parties and left the information with them, and they know that the public hearing is next week. If we vote on this, I'm going to vote to move it on, but we'll see what the public hearing has to say next week. And I have to admit, I'm old school. I personally don't think the tax assessment is the place to put my own, but I've been wrong before.
No, same as so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess the biggest concern is guaranteeing like a private loan for these kind of environmental improvements, but using like a public tax assessment to guarantee that. So I think this was mentioned before, but of all the places this has happened around the country, has there ever been a default that's come then back on that tax roll?
The whole country. Good morning, thank you for having me back. There have been, there have been, I don't know about numbers of defaults in the country, it's extremely low. I can't tell you the exact number. There's 36 or 37 states that have programs, and within those states, there's multiple administrators. Michigan, we happen to be the only administrator in Michigan, but it's an open market. Another administrator could start up if they wanted to. We have one default situation in Michigan, and that is a full default situation in St. Clair County. It was a, a developer who was a bad actor all the way around. He did not pay his contractors, he did not pay his mortgage, he did not pay his PACE payments, he did not pay his taxes, and he moved to California. So they have moved through the process of default. It's, it's probably a couple of years into the three-year process, and they've been able to sell, they've been able to. to sell, they've been able to resolve one of the two properties, and the other one has three buyers right now who their, the receivership is considering, and it looks like it's going to go forward. It's the only, we've had 87, yeah, 87 projects in Michigan. That's the only one that's been a problem, and like I said, it wasn't PACE that was the centerpiece of it. It was a developer who really took the county for a ride in every area. Other than that, we've had a few properties who haven't paid on time, but none of those have gone forward to a default, and they've all made good on their payments and come up to date. We've had quite a few, maybe seven or eight, prepay their loans after the five-year penalty period, and so they were able to get the private capital to do the work that they wanted to do. They were able to raise the funds through their business, and they paid off their loan, and it's off the tax rule again. There have been six that have changed hands, and I think I mentioned this last time, half of those, the new buyer requested that it be paid off before the sale, and the other half, the PACE loan went to the new buyer because they're getting the benefit from it, and they picked up the payments. I don't know if that answers your question. I mean, it's, anything is a risk. There's not, there's not no risk, but it's very low.
So, let's say, okay, let's say.
Is your mic on? Mic?
No. There we go. Let's say there is a default, and a roller coaster thing. Who is then in line to get their money?
So, because it's, because the PACE loan is a tax payment, it comes ahead of the mortgage, but because it does not accelerate, the only thing that's due ahead of the mortgage is the current and past due payments. So, that ends up being less than 4% of the total PACE loan that would come ahead of a senior lender. And we spend a lot of time explaining this to senior lenders, because that's their immediate concern. Wow, that's, that's a big loan. It's coming ahead of us in a default situation. But when you explain to them that it doesn't accelerate, and that it's only the current and past due payments, and these are payments that are very modest because the loan is over 25 years, they, without exception, end up signing a very legal document saying, "We agree to this PACE loan," because they understand it's not going to be, it's not going to be a prohibitive amount of money. It's going to be a small amount.
Okay, but to put it most simply, if something happened, we would be, or the county would be in line to recover its money first before the mortgage companies?
So, the county, there's no county money involved. It's really about the PACE lender who's trying to recover any money than a default, because the county hasn't put out any money, they're not taking in any money. So, but the PACE lender will try to, will get, will request that the unpaid amount be placed on the tax bill, and it would go through a, you know, the default process just like any other unpaid tax, but the amount would be a very modest, less than 4% portion of the PACE loan. And the lenders are really the ones taking the risk, because they can't get all their money back if it's not paid. That's just, that's the risk they take. But because of the nature of the special assessment, the fact that it becomes a tax, it's a very, very low default rate, much lower than a typical lending situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, very good question.
Mr. Chenison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, it is negotiable if the property is to be sold, whether or not the new buyer has to assume this?
100%. I mean, it doesn't go away if they buy it unless, if it doesn't get paid off first, but it's negotiable, absolutely.
That's what I mean. It's negotiable that they would have to pay it off prior to the sale, or they could pick it up or whatever.
Correct.
But I look at it as my sewer assessment. Long Lake has sewers. When I bought the property, we just kept that assessment paying until it was up. So, from that process, I could have said, hey, pay it off as part of the sale, but same thing applies here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Hadfield?
I'm totally comfortable with this. There is, yeah, it's not, we're not making the loan. We're allowing our tax rolls to be the funnel between the payer and the lender. Absolute worst-case basis, we would, through a tax foreclosure, we would become the owner of the property at no cost. It's not going to happen. Yeah.
Well, that's the question I wanted answered.
Right.
You know, because I realize it's, we're not putting out our money, but it's guaranteed against our tax rule, and if that comes against our tax rule, we get the property?
We get the property, but we don't owe anybody anything. We would get the property because we have the first priority lien on that property, but it doesn't mean that we're obligated to pay anybody for that. So, worse, yeah, the worst-case basis is, we assume the role of property owner and end up having to sell the property. Chances of that happening are absolutely minimal, because you've got two lenders in front of us, or, yeah, behind us, that need to protect their interest. So, they would pay us out in order to improve their own lien position and the chance to collect whatever equity there may be in selling that property.
That's what I wanted to hear, you know, if I'm going to vote for this.
Absolutely. And again, as we discussed before, this is a tool. It's something that I don't see being heavily utilized in the county as far as how they're going to use it. Copper Rock has asked for this as a potential piece. They haven't even committed to forward using this, but at least if it's something that's available to them, or something that's out there for them that may help them as far as putting a piece of the financing together. And that was a great explanation as far as there's no county money involved in it. There's very little, if any, county liability involved in it, so I think it's easy to support this.
And obviously, every project's different. You're going to look at every project when it comes down the line, but on this, if we're taking this as an example, you have an experienced developer who is doing this project and looking at others in the county, so this is not their first time. This is not a fly-by-night company, so that alone as well, I'm comfortable bringing this forward to you.
Well, and on a project that size, you're going to have two sizable lenders that are both doing their due diligence and their underwriting on that, that have much, much more at risk than what we do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chen.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
Being not very knowledgeable in what we're talking about right now, I have a tendency to go along with, John, I apologize for that, John, for going along with you. I'm all for moving forward with this, but there's still questions in my head that we're, it appears like we're getting into the business of making sure somebody else has a guarantee on their loan. There's just something about it that doesn't feel quite right to me yet, but I'm in favor of moving ahead with this. I was also curious, I know we've seen a lot of nice pictures and grants of, diagrams of areas that have took this process up, but I didn't see any, any numbers on counties that may have turned it down and for other reasons. So, I was just curious if there have been any counties that this has been presented to, and they chose not to go with this program, and why?
Oh, that's a good question.
Let me take it first. We did 10 years ago, and I think there was someone interested at the time that just did move forward. There was nothing in.
You say we, who's we?
We, Larry County. Larry County looked at it 10 years ago, and Larry was involved back then. I talked to the attorneys, and they said, they provided information, everything was great, and no one had a real recollection of, it just was not a big issue at the time, and I think it was new 10 years ago. So, you have a track record now, and you have somebody who's interested in using it, so that's why we brought it back.
To answer your question?
Sort of.
Clear as night. Okay.
Just, I wish I had a much clearer answer.
I will just, I will add just in terms of, in terms of breadth, the typical thing would be that a project would come forward, we would go to the local government, we would start going through the process, we would visit, we would do the hearing similar to what we've done here, but not everyone is as efficient as you all are, so it might take six months or, you know, that kind of thing. By that time, the project has found other funding, and so then the local government might think, well, we'll just wait till another project comes before we proceed. We've had one county that decided they wanted to start their own program, because, you know, it's an open program. Anybody can be as crazy as we were and spend five years trying to put a program like this together, and, but they've never closed a project. And they, you know, they have actually reached out to us to ask for help, so.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Our obvious gain as a county is the housing.
It's a tool to improve boundaries.
Then the first thing I question, of course, is, we always call it affordable housing. $1,500 a month doesn't seem affordable. So, my question is, when we add on this avenue to put more green energy sources in place and all this additional stuff that we're working to get onto the apartments, how is that going to affect the rates of the person trying to rent the apartment later? Is this going to save money because it's a green thing we're doing, or is it going to cost more money because of the additional cost to the people that are putting up the building?
Well, I look at it as this way, if the developer wants to make these improvements to make their, to meet whatever threshold, they may say it saves them money operationally. You know, it saves on utility bills long-term, so they put a little bit up front, and they see that ROI long-term. That's what I think typically you see with these type of projects. And once again, the developer has to know the market. If they're coming in and they're going to charge $2,000 a month for rent in Hastings, probably not, they may not get a lot of support for that. So, if they're going to come in and say, hey, we want to make these improvements, it's going to save us operationally so we can reduce our rent costs, or not charge as much to the tenant on top of their rent, depending on how they structure that. I think that's what you end up seeing a lot on these projects.
I just, no, we always throw the words around affordable housing, and I always wonder, affordable to who?
Attainable. It's attainable now.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Mr. Smelker. Mr. Chair. What the project that Copper Rock is doing here, just to answer my question, there's two or three different things happening there, right? Isn't a certain amount of it's affordable housing and a certain amount isn't?
I didn't tell you the percentages, but that was part of, they received some state funding that requires that they make a certain percentage of those units affordable or workplace housing. I'm not sure which the terminology applies to that, but it was because of some grant funding that they were able to utilize.
Now, to get back to that, are these separate buildings? Affordable housing a separate building from anything else?
No, they're commingled.
They're commingled. So, if they went through you guys, would it be for the whole building, or can they do parts of the building?
The only thing that they can use PACE financing for are parts of the project, and it could be the affordable part, or it could be the market, whatever, whichever part of it. The only thing they can use it for are items that save on their utility bills.
On the environmental stuff, yeah.
Yeah. They can, I mean, let me qualify that. They could do renewable energy, which doesn't save per se on your energy bill. I don't believe that's what they're planning. Most people, what they do, it's HVAC systems, lighting, insulated roof, low-flow plumbing, all of those kind of things, and that usually gets up to the limit right there with some of those basics.
Don't like it.
One question, Bruce, if we look at it and say, hey, it's going to cost me an extra $100,000 to make these improvements, if I'm putting it in typical financing, say, five, 10 years, it's going to be a lot more in those five, 10 years, but if I can spread that over 25, I guess it'd be less of a hit to that rent. So, I think that's another tool that's going to, that would help a project.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? And I think we have this as a recommendation, but because we have a public hearing next week, we don't have a motion on the floor right now. We can have this discussion, and after the public hearing next week, if we can have it under items for consideration.
Yep.
And either vote to move it forward or not.
We'll do it.
Okay. Does that work? Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Perfect. Good questions, Commissioners. Good discussion. Thank you. And the other item on your agenda, as far as the executive assistant position, we're putting that on hold for right now, and we'll discuss that in a couple of weeks. Item on your agenda. Limited public comment at this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
I want to thank Louella for answering my FOIA in the way I needed it answered, not the way I had requested. The salary compensation committee is concerning to me at this point in time, based on what I've seen and how it's weighted towards the administration and the court system. You seem to be giving those classifications out pretty readily in that area. I'm not sure if it's going in the other directions or not, so I'm just, and I'm also not seeing salaries of what was and what you're going to, but you just have, oh, this is what we want to increase it by. So, that makes a difference, I think, in determining it. On the grant for Bailey, when they got that endowment, it was going to generate about $16,000 for operation. Now, they're sort of moving that in, okay, we're going to use it. So, when I said the Bailey Park is a liability of debt, it's still going to be that way. If you're going to put that type of money into it, it's going to probably cost you more for the upkeep to continue with that, so I don't think I'm wrong. Bruce, I'm going to remind you what you said back on the 11th, that for this jail facility, all must be part of it. The all has to start with county government. It doesn't start with everybody else. So, if you don't look at restructuring what you're doing, that becomes a huge problem, in my opinion. And how you restructure is looking at your mandates and non-mandated. You've got to spend where you're needed, which public safety encompasses more needs and more people. You keep on spending money on little projects, so that, and you don't want to address the jail. You've got the front of the court building sitting over there with $182,000 in windows. Well, then you can't hire people in the county government. So, do you need to start restructuring to a smaller government, which means less facilities to upkeep and have? This is conversations that you really need to start having sooner rather than later, because you're going to keep on coming in here with these requests of, we need more, we need more, we need to spend. So, if you don't have that five-year plan for the county, the Commissioners, and what you're, how you going to do these facilities, they give really a great need.
Additional public comment? Hearing on Commissioner comments, Commissioner Bassett.
I attended a few meetings since the last time we spoke. I did attend the Hall Lake Open House that they had at the library, and that is the project over by Gun Lake. There's a small lake there, but they're planning to replace a dam that is in need of repair. So, it really ended up just being a presentation. so it really ended up just being a presentation of the information, a lot of tables, there was no real presentation of information, you could go around and get the information from there. They do have a public, some more public comment times coming up, because the next step is that it goes to Eagle as the next step, and then, once Eagle has it, then they'll have public hearings about it, so I guess stay tuned on it. There are a lot of people there, let's just say, there's a lot of interest in the, in the project. Then, also, Catherine and I went to Yankee Springs Township Board Meeting, they did as of the, is it March first, they now are a standalone fire, fire station, and so that transition has gone well. I know there was some concern about making sure that they were straight with the 911 and all that, and Rob Heathis had been having continuing communications with Stephanie and the folks there, so, so far, the transition has gone well. I've attended the Barry County Community Mental Health Board Meeting, they have some renovations going on in their building, and that's going well. And yesterday, went to the Substance Disorder Oversight Policy Board Meeting, and...
Commissioner Colton. Mr. Getty.
I want to thank Steve Schultz for coming in and sharing that exciting information about Thornapple Township, not necessarily in my district, but in Commissioner Smalker's district, but people often think of Thornapple Township in the northwest corner of the county as, as being, you know, well-served with internet, and, and it's not, there's, there's, big swaths of that township that aren't served at all, and so, it's really exciting that Bloomingdale is expanding their business portfolio to come into Barry County and aggressively go after these, these opportunities. So, eight hundred houses, that's, that's a lot, and so, it's, it's really exciting. I know it's been a long time coming, and it's, and it's on the foundation that Jennifer Hinesman did with the broadband report. I mean, for those of us that have been here a little while, it's taken a while to get to this point, but it's because of those actions early on that's led to us being successful in getting these companies to come into Barry County.
Mr. Smalker, welcome back.
Yeah, I've been going, haven't attended any meetings, but I do think it would be a good idea for the letter of support for, seems they've been in business since '05. I think a letter of support for them wouldn't hurt a thing.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield.
I just want to thank Jennifer and Nicole for handing out their most recent reports. I hope you'll all take a look at it, you edited your place today. I think that what really stands out to me is that this has truly become a county-wide organization. They're touching a lot of activities throughout the county, far cry from what it was five, ten years ago, but it's exciting to read through those reports and look at everything that's, that's going on, so thank you for handing those out.
Commissioner Campbell.
This is twice, John, I'd agree with John. That letter of support was very much needed.
Make it a habit, okay? Don't make it a habit.
I promise I will not.
Okay.
Commissioner Toulson and I had an opportunity to visit the Sheriff's Department the other day, they had a very extensive demonstration on body cameras, which is a kind of a wave in the future that hasn't, hasn't made its way into Barry County yet, but it is a very expensive venture, and the one side of me, the cheap side, says it's a very expensive venture. The other side of me says, well, so is my insurance at home, and other things that I have to do to protect myself as a private person. This is a protection for the county. It's our protection against lawsuits, it's our, it's our, it's our being, our sight, our knowledge of what happens at a scene, I know we're already dealing with something right now going on, ongoing, and when you, when you come, when you put that together with the cost of the cameras versus the cost of what could happen without them, it's something we really have to look at. And, I know in the future we will, and Bob, you probably got something you'd like to add to that?
Well, I agree. I was very impressed with the technology and the clarity, and how easy it is to redact sounds, people's voices, faces, the technologies, it wouldn't be that many hours to have to go through something and actually block out what's needing to be blocked out. But Bruce is right, it's a discussion that we're going to have to have as a, as a board, as a county, you know, just to take the questions out of it, like right now with the situation that happened last fall, just to make sure that people are all on the same page, and not thinking that something's being covered up, or, you know, you hear all these things, and I think this is a good way of, the story's right there on film, so I was very impressed with the demonstration the other day, so, thank you.
Thank you. Just a few thoughts, and Commissioner Hatfield, just to make a correction, I made copies of those reports to give to you guys, because...
I know who wrote them.
You know who wrote them. So, we get a president's report and an EDA director's report on a monthly basis, and you guys haven't seen those in the past, but I thought it was important for you guys to have the ability to look through those and see all the different things your economic development investment dollars are reaching in the county, and it's countywide, and Jennifer's led quite a team doing a fantastic job with that, so just wanted you to read through that, because to hear economic development, but to see what they're actually involved in, and the scope that they're involved in, is impressive. So, I know I haven't done a great job of keeping you guys updated on some of that stuff, but I know Commissioner Getty and Commissioner Hatfield both sit on that board for different roles, so it's good to have other voices as well. I also support, would support a letter of support for the BE grants, I forget what it is, Jennifer, now, we had five, six, seven different companies?
I think we're to eight now, but we did write a letter on your behalf, but if you want to submit another, that's my turn.
Okay, so there are eight different organizations, companies currently looking to apply for BE grants in the county to help us with our internet gaps throughout, so that's great news, and as Jennifer stated, we're kind of at the end of the line with BE grants, because we didn't have matching funds to go into that, however, there's a lot of interest that they're putting up the matching funds, and we should see some significant improvement to some of those flat spots in the county in the near future, so. And just finally, since we had Dan here today, Barry County is blessed because we have the Barry State Game Area, we have the Gun Lake State Rec, you know, State Rec Area, the Middleville Game Area, we have so much state recreation area that most counties don't have, I think if you look at our parks and rec budget in the county, it's probably one of the smallest parks and rec budgets in the state, because we're blessed to have so much state property and so many, so many recreational resources, so I support these things going forward, I think the Metcalf Lake or the Bailey Nature Preserve is going to be a great addition to the county going forward, so if we're making investments in there, those investments do come with expenses and costs, but like I said, when you look at what we actually invest in our park system, it is so minimal compared to what other communities do, that we're blessed to be able to have some of these things, so good luck on those grants, I hope they go through, we'll see that in time, so thank you all for coming out today, we are adjourned.